Bruce had a question quick about sign ordinance.
I was joking about waiting until after the meeting, but I thought it was a short question. We're ready to call it the order.
A roll call meeting in order of the special meeting of the Water Council. Uh, Water Council President, Justice, and CL, mystery. Are you want to do roll call for the city side?
Yeah, I'd love to. All right. Let's do Tepper.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Shuddy.
Here.
Healer.
Here.
Durand.
Here.
Peters or?
On the way.
Peters is on the way, absent currently. Um, and then I believe Mayor Hollein is also absent, so it looks like he's online.
We have a quorum, so. Just recalling, called over the planning commission side for the joint meeting. Earl, will you do a roll call, please?
Yeah. Fire.
Here.
Olewski.
Here.
Dargitz.
Here.
Hollein.
Here.
Dolly.
Yes.
The pack check.
Here.
I believe that's the full. Oh, Case?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't recognize you in yours too.
Yeah.
Um, and then Julia Tate's online. Uh, she's an alternate, but I believe in house we have a quorum.
Got her name on there.
Quorum established.
Okay, so I could give everybody their eyes. Also, Shuddy, can you see?
Henry Father, we like always thank you. Thank you coming here with Thanksgiving for this, this, this life you've given us, the city that we are able to navigate through and govern and lead. And so we just ask today for wisdom and guidance in our decisions. We thank you all for what you have given and direction is as men and women come together to use their skills and abilities that you have given uh, to be able to work, work through this, this Lake District more in. So we're just asking for the best guidance that we can get, see if we knew to walk through this in the, in this meeting and in the, in the weeks and months to come.
I can get everybody. You can stand. I was a minute, so I said, I'm like, I mean, I'm saying, say, America. I'm a nation, I'm not gonna hide. In this world, it's like a free justice.
Dive right into the show. We'll get it going. It could take a little while. I didn't realize it was gonna be 25 pages. I mean, not that much. Uh, so I think first thing though, we have a couple new faces in the crew with the planning commission and maybe Liam would want to introduce them. Uh, otherwise everyone else is fairly well known.
Yeah. So Miss Beer is now officially a full fledged member. He's been an alternate for a couple of years, three years. Um, so congratulations. You know, I think around long time. Uh, and then, uh, Michelle, she's a, works with Ellie. Well, I don't exactly know who your employer is, Ellie TC.
Ellie TC itself could have been actually.
Yep. She's got a very strong background in development and, and projects and most other things. We're lucky to have her.
Welcome, Bill, Michelle. Um, so just a little bit of background, why we, why the mayor put this committee together, uh, and who the committee is. So let's first of all go to the committee. Uh, Commissioner, Miss Bonnie Olewski was on our committee, hardly missed a meeting of 10 over the last few months. Uh, Councilman Mike Danforth was, uh, you were there all the time. That was, that was, uh, that was hard to take sometimes. Well, it's, it's getting closer to, to St. Patrick's Day, so. You're not Norwegian. I do know that. Uh, Commissioner Todd Case, uh, and Councilman Kyle Peters was on the committee. He will be here in a little bit. Um, and Commissioner Blake Dolly, uh, was on the, uh, was on the committee and myself, Lynn, you're on the ultimate. Uh, so culmination of, of discussions and over week, but why did we get to this discussion? Why did the mayor decide that it was important to have a discussion? And that's, I believe, because of the continued controversy that we saw in our community and, and as Todd has put it a few times, the bloodletting. I mean, how many more do we have? And we'll have them every time someone comes based on the current ordinance. We're gonna continue to have those and do we want to continue to have those? That's the question. Do we want changes? This is, these are some things that the committee has come up with, uh, just to dig deeper into what could be changed and what should be changed. And that's going to be a breathing thing today here. I'm gonna turn it over to Carla in a minute, but, uh, there's some things in there that not everybody's gonna like, of course. And, uh, uh, not everyone's gonna want to see the lake turn out the way it would turn out under these new changes. But also there's plenty out there on the other side that don't want to continue to see where it's headed right now. So that's what we're gonna dive into. Uh, Carla and her staff with Brandy have put a lot of time into now the discussions we've had over 10 weeks. Uh, 10 meetings, just months, months, but I believe there was 10 and 12 meetings. We started in May. Um, we, it, it really, it comes down to this document. This is not the final document. Uh, there's, uh, there's changes that can still be made, but, uh, uh, it will, it still has to go in front of the, uh, public notice and go to the planning commission. Then it's gotta go to the, it, it, so there's a lot of steps left, but there's a lot of steps. This is a good day to just have open discussion by those who, um, feel that there's importance, uh, and, and want to speak on it. So I'm going to turn it over from a city's perspective to Carla, Carla Heuer.
And.
And Brandy wants to speak first before Carla. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make clear too of like, as far as community development staff, Carla has been a part of the committee. I have not been. So this is also, I'm, it's educational for me, um, just where the committee wanted to, how it wanted to be ran. And so now I think after this point is where I'll, like, it'll be able to see and Carla and I have discussed throughout briefly. But as far as being a part of the committee itself, I was not. Um, so that I think this will be the turning point now of finding out where you guys have landed and then making sure that it fits in with ordinance. And, and that we're all on the same page there.
Oh, there's. Yeah, I asked why their community development manager was not asked to sit on the committee.
Uh, I think it was time. I think it was multiple, multiple meetings. Uh, that, that was.
Not, not anything to say bad about Carla, Carla.
And, and she had Carla who was, uh.
Awesome.
Yeah, was very, very well. And so I'm, I'm happy that Brandy let that happen and it's, it's been a really, really good thing. Go ahead.
Lynn, if I can, although I, I think that, but in part, ultimately the, the mayor, the one that identified the committee. But part of this was we did not want this to be a city staff led committee. Okay. And so Brandy and crew have been a great resource for us and that what their intent was is to be a resource, not the driver of. That's, that's, that's how that happened.
Yeah. Public comments, public opinions that we as planning commissioners have seen in meetings and us as councilmen might see out on the street might be different than what Brandy sees in her office every day. So, yeah. Anyway, um, I believe that's about it. Uh, again, Carla is going to take over on by line sort of. And I think that will give an opportunity for those to, to be able to ask questions and go, hey, I've got a concern. Hey, no, we like that type of stuff of things. So we will now turn it over to Ms. Garland.
Well, thank you so much, Lynn. And yeah, it's exactly like Lynn said, it is a very much a discussion today. Um, what we have is just the framework in place here. It does look a lot different than the CL currently is existing, uh, just because it, it is quite different. So some points to note before we really dive in is that, um, that was, I'll pull the agenda back up here actually. So I'll kind of take a look at some of these points here. So this gives a little bit of a summary of kind of everything that went over. Um, again, some of the major points is that the current CL as it's existed is going to remain and then just exist as a closed district. So for all of the handful of developments that are currently CL have active permits, active conditional uses. All of those will remain intact and in place and will not be impacted at all by the change just that we're proposing.
As the other commercial zonings that are already.
Yes. Yeah. And exactly, anything that is, all zoning existing at the lake will stay unless somebody comes forth and proposes to be rezoned to CL or any other zone. Um, so everything, all of the other commercial, so like the Sandbar, for instance, is C3, that will stay C3. Um, the prop will stay the props. All those places will remain intact, will not be altered by anything that we're going over or will be looking to enact. Um. The other major change that I was asked to address, because it led to some confusion, is that we're going away from conditional uses, um, in the proposed zoning and sticking more to permitted uses and special permitted uses. Um, just so everybody here is clear on the differences. Um, permitted uses are basically allowed, specified by zoning district, allowed in that district, um, as long as it's meeting the basic zoning criteria. Where a special permitted use is something that's, um, permitted in a different zoning district, but has specific criteria that has to be met before administratively it can be permitted. Where a conditional use is something that would, um, generally not maybe be appropriate or would maybe have additional restrictions to make it appropriate for a zone. So we're eliminating the conditional use and keeping everything strictly permitted uses and special permitted uses. Um, again, just to avoid, we're trying to eliminate as much ambiguity in the CL as possible. Um, going and rezoning to the CL within the intention of having your use be a conditional use is just an additional public hearing you'd have to go to. And it leaves a big question mark for people looking to rezone or neighboring properties. So looking to eliminate some of that. Um, yes, sir.
On that point though, I, I believe that, that we did talk about, there still is the public's opportunity when this comes up. It's just that it's not multiple, multiple, uh, times that people from the public have to show up to fight about the same subject over and over. So that's kind of some of what.
I think what we were looking at doing.
Yeah, go ahead, Todd.
What we were looking at doing there is to have. Fight at whether or not the property should be zoned, CL, A, B, C, whatever. If the zoning is in place and you jump through that hurdle, there are several specific uses that would be allowed within each one of those sub-CL zones. As long as they meet the criteria, it, it happens. So we come in, uh, it includes the ambiguity as she said, thinking, oh, God, there's all these uses. Well, actually, no, you go to the lakefront CL district, there's maybe three things that you can do, the way it's set up right now. And so if you come in and people say, well, I don't know what the heck's gonna happen when they rezone, it could be, well, no, this is all that can happen. So if you object to these three specific uses, that's your argument. And so they can have the argument at one time as opposed to this rezoning it. And then six weeks later, we have a conditional use hearing or are you in the same place all over again. So we either have one. Either in or not at that time.
We really wore the public out and really.
Where's the planning consultant?
Yeah, but isn't that what you signed up for?
There's, there's not a lot of consistency necessarily in conditional use, right? But it's up to that board hearing, the argument at that time, whether they impose conditions or what conditions they impose. Trying to get it all as special permitted, you know, and understand everything right up, Ron.
Try to, the conditions make it acceptable.
Trying to eliminate discretion.
Yeah. So to, to give you a little bit more before I send it back, uh, there's, there was three on this, on this committee that had tons and years of experience. And, and some of us, like myself, had zero experience with permission, you know, all the different definitions. So, you know, Mike Danforth, Blake Dolly and Todd and Bonnie had a lot of the experience and, you know, that, that was, I, I just kind of felt like I, I get to be in the middle and, and I get to learn a ton of stuff. Because with part Carla's experience and their experience, it just, it, it went, it went very well. As you can see, there was a lot, a lot of changing. And, and I know Carla's gonna go through the three zones, but just to set the plate a little bit for her. Um, Todd brought up one of them. There, there, there's different zones. We talked about it in our last meeting and that is on the lake, just off the lake, and then further past. And so she'll get into those definitions, but that, you know, for the public that's going, how much of this do I want to listen to on, uh, uh, on this? That, that's where we're gonna end up and, and that's what, what our intentions are today.
Just one slide, maybe not as much as that, but it was a point that was on the first slide.
Um, yeah, let's go back. This one here?
Yeah. On the first bullet point, it says, and actively under development to continue working on their already established intended uses. So how does that work? Do you have a building permit? Does it expire in a year or is that an open ended?
Yeah.
Continue and if you started before this process, I can just go with the old rules or how does that work?
Yep, exactly that. So the, the CL district as these people were permitted for, as they had applied for, that's gonna remain. So as a CL district is written in ordinance, that CL district will remain. Uh, these will be, this is looking to create new districts, so a new CL district basically. So then moving forward and that district will be closed. So nobody else can propose to be brought in under the current CL district. And then moving forward, everybody who wanted to be CL would fall under these new ones. And then at least the people who, you know, they already spend a lot of time and energy becoming those CL designate. The CL designation already went through the wringer many times. Those folks won't be now, um, you know.
How does that work? Let's say if it's one thing to build a little restaurant.
Yeah.
Done, button it up in 12 months' time, great. What if it's a larger project that, well, three years from now, I plan on doing this? That, that, how does that?
I think what we were looking at, Dave, was that I think there's three CL districts currently on the lake, either adjacent or across the road. And what we said that they came in, they received their permits, they came in with the zoning in place, they made their investments. They, they've got, most of those projects have more than 50% done. If at some point in time, one of those projects wanted to transfer it to Blake and Blake wants to continue that same use, he can't. Or if Blake wants to go back and say, well, what was available to Todd when I had that CL? He should have that same opportunity because that was the value that the city placed on that property and allowed them to do that sort of work. It's, there's almost like a vesting that's been applied to those three properties, but we're not gonna be doing that anymore under the old CL zones. It will create a new request that would comport with what we see in the new CL regs. So the three that are there, it's a get out of jail free card. That's the easiest way of explaining it. They get to do what they were intending to do when they came in and the opportunities that were afforded to them at the time that they.
So, what if, so go ahead. So where's the line? Do we know is like a PUD or we know what their intentions are? Or can it be, well, it's still open ended like, well, you know, two years from now, you know, we never brought it to you, we never told anybody it wasn't a PUD.
Well, it's something that was eligible for them to do at the time of that. They would be able to go back and do those things that were in the book at the time that they came in. Because nothing's changed for them. I mean, they, you know, that, that's my take on it. I mean, something else.
We, we have a similar concept in ordinance today in the residential zones, right? So we have R2A, which is a closed residential district. It applies to a lot of the older properties in town. We're not actively adding properties into R2A zoning. But if you do own an R2A house, you can still get a building permit and everything, as long as it conforms to that code, right? That governs R2A. So the proposal was to leave the CL district for the ones that have already got the conditional uses, more or less as it is today. Lock it down. We can't add to it, but those properties will still be governed by the current.
So we're gonna go, Brandy has, Brandy had her hand up here and then we'll go to Brandy. Um, Brandy, what did you have to add to that?
So anything with the existing CL, like Blake mentioned there, that the R2A is also a closed district. So nobody else can be rezoned to it. And then, so any of their conditional uses that they have currently and then that they have received building permits for that have not expired, then those are still ongoing. So when it says actively, like that they are, they have their building permit, they are active. Now, if they wanted to come in with any of the other, um, uses as a conditional use, then they would still have the right to go to the Board of Adjustment, which then they could, um, you know, you still have the public hearing. You can put conditions on it. So then, but just that you're not doing, you're not taking any uses away from somebody's vested interest.
Bob, for example, Bob aside, they didn't have storage units or whatever as part of my initial plan, but I want to do that now. He could ask. He's, he still can come and ask. There's no guarantee, but he can still come and ask. The Board of Justice.
So Brandy, you might, Brandy might have something to add.
Bob can add his other two acres to his existing development and follow those same.
And that pretty much answers my question because I was gonna use Mr. Greg as an example. So what he has there right now, rules that are in place right now in the CL district. He could come and ask for a conditional use here under, under those old rules.
Doesn't necessarily.
But it's not, like you said, he can't add two more acres. You know, it's gotta be in that footprint. It's, that's in that.
Yeah, so more acres is under the new CLs.
If he added any more, it'd fall under the new CLs.
And so that, that's, this is really important discussion because this just happened in the last meeting that he added this. I haven't even read the language. But Mike will have a little bit more, but he, he brought it to.
Here's one thing that. I hope I'm clear on this. Um, let's just say this is the current approved CL zone, right? Not what we're gonna be talking about traditional ones today. And let's say I have a property, Bob's property, that is don't CL. This is my rulebook. I can do anything that was approved in here. If, if I want to do something that falls under conditional use, I gotta go out, just like I normally would. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So I can do it. I don't have to have an open, I don't, the fact that you do or don't have a building permit application in or approval has nothing to do with what he's able to do. The ordinance dictates what he's able to do based on what it was zoned at it. Correct? Is that fair?
That's my intention.
So if, if it were me, add clarity to this thing, take out an actively under development because it, it doesn't have to be. It just needs to be zoned appropriately, right? So that's anything that's originally and previously zoned under the CL language stays intact as is. Nothing changes.
So that's, that's the critical thing in here is that the CL stayed, you got it zoned. If you're Bob, you own the stony, and you're part owner of the Stony Point property. The rules, these, these new rules will not apply. This was the language we put in here.
So just to quick.
It's a good question, just to make sure this is clarified. So let's say. Let's go along with.
The zoning goes with the land.
Okay.
Goes with the land. No.
And, and I, I think it's.
Buy the next two acres, can't do it.
That goes under.
That piece of land, the, the parameters, boundaries have been set.
Yes. And, and, and the other two, the other two CL zones right now were the Stockren, uh, Root Sync, Root Sync Stockren, uh, property on the north side, the, the, the little, um, getaway. Uh, and then there's one others and that.
I pray wins.
Yeah, pray wins.
Yeah, those buildings there.
The, the steel building.
Well, no matter or not, but that whole thing there, nothing changes.
Yeah.
And nothing changes, nothing changes that the C3 zoning of the pop, that's what.
Yes.
Any other zone. Cepesca Lodge, anything else.
Those are the C3.
Commander.
C.
Yeah, it's never been C. All right, Dan. Or say, yeah, it's, you know, when it's an actively under development, that caught my attention. Like, okay, so what if it's inactive? Bob, since I clarify, because now that, you know, still with the ordinance.
And that is only on the staff report language, not in the ordinance itself, because that's where, and now the reason why it's included in there is just because, like, for, because it does apply. Cause conditional uses do expire. So if somebody currently has a conditional use, like, nothing is changing with it. They still will fall under when, when permits expire after a year, after three years for commercial projects. And then, um, if they, and then if they need to, if they do not have a conditional use for a use that is available in ordinance, that, that they would still go through the, the process through the Board of Adjustment.
All right. So.
One last comment.
One last, okay.
And that's the logic behind the, the, the decision that we as a committee have made as the how we got to that point.
Yeah.
And, and the greatest example, I keep picking this up, Bob, because it's the largest investment out there from a CL standpoint, is there's a lot of time, effort, money and expectation that's been put in by individuals. Make commitments and to go through this process, buy land, start developing land, whatever it is. Um, how do we change that rule on them now and say, oops, we're changing it? You know, so we had to say, look, they, our committee felt it was right for them to be able to, for us to uphold the authority that we gave them within the, the zoning that was approved for them. And versus saying, oh, now you can't do this, this and this anymore. Too bad. So we felt it was a rightful and justifiable way to close that, leave it and move on, everything forward looking.
Well, a majority thought that way. And this is what the public will have a chance to, uh, you know, have a, have a look at it, have a say. So that's why this meeting is important and that's why we're getting it out there. So, um, I think, um, I think we'll just, uh, put it back into our hands and we'll start getting through this. Get through the meat and potatoes and other.
Go ahead. Just clarification or verification, I believe I understand, but, um, extent of authorization, zonings, conditions, um, expiration or they are in place, property's destroyed or is rebuilt, uh, rights are transferred, they can reestablish it under the, you know, extent authorities, right? When would they expire?
Yeah. I mean, so if a property is damaged 60%, um, then depending on where, because ordinances can change. So it all just depends, but if it's something that is damaged over 60% and needed a conditional use to be in, or constructed, then they would have to go back for that conditional use if it were destroyed.
Yeah, the CL.
Anywhere.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. Anything, cause that gets into the substantial damage.
There, there's a little thing that. Need to go with that, then it all depends on whether the CUP was granted for specific use. And there, there's, there's some place to follow. So it's kind of, so by and large, the main, the main thing that you gotta remember is that if I was issued a CUP for a lawful use, a lawful use was destroyed. I had to go back and get the CUP, get to extend a lawful use, do we get, nothing to change in the ordinance. I think we require the rest to be there.
All right. Take it over, Carla.
All right, you guys. So again, as Councilman Durand's kind of stated, this is a, a discussion. It's kind of, kind of a workshop. So we'll just kind of go over some of the major changes. As you can see in the margins, I've already made, made some notes where, um, received some feedback on some possible changes. Um, so it was brought up that maybe the, you know, there's been a kind of a naming of the different zones. So maybe just some clarity on that. Um, so right now, as it's put up, the main, the two main zones are gonna be what is adjacent to the lake. And then what is opposite adjacent is how it's currently written in your handouts and how it was, um, presented on the agenda today. So basically anything that's lake adjacent is gonna be any property that directly above the shorelines of Cepesca or Pelican. Um, we also are adding a new use in here, which is gonna be the lake retail service establishments and that, those are businesses that operate within the vicinity of a lake and provides products, services or experiences directly related to leisure, recreation and tourism. These businesses, businesses primarily serve individuals or groups engaged in activities centered around water and outdoor recreation. Um, so then just looking at the CL, A, which is gonna be our zone adjacent to the lake. Um, this is what we have listed as permitted and special permitted uses. Um, these are gonna be similar, exactly the same as what was outlined, um, in the committee's first, um, presentation that they had for that zone. Um, now with the modification that the, I suppose it's not even a change, that's what they were proposing. But it just also shows what the provisions are to allow for the special permitted uses for the restaurants and the bar tavern. So all these uses here are permitted, um, with these restaurant and the tavern having to meet this additional criteria outside of what's already existing in other parts of. With these restaurant and the tavern having to meet this additional criteria outside of what's already existing in other parts of. The ordinance and design criteria for the CL district in order to be permitted. Yes.
We've had a lot of discussions, always created confusion when we start talking and trying to differentiate what's a restaurant, what's a bar tavern. So in, in our use here, and I'm not sure if that, that changes in other aspects of our language, but for this purpose. Restaurants is, is food sale, production and sales, that does not include any alcohol sales, correct? Isn't that correct?
Yeah. I believe so, I can check for that.
Yeah, so that's, just so everybody knows here, when we talk about restaurants versus bar taverns, what am I getting, right? Well, a restaurant says you're selling food. And a bar tavern is you're selling food or alcohol, or alcohol. So that we, we created a distinction that makes it easier to understand, and the border. The wall or the differentiation is alcohol.
But they're both. Special permitted uses with the same design standards?
Could be, I don't know that, I'm just saying, they're. The difference being, if I'm, if I'm not there and concerned about what's going in there, I have a better understanding when it's a. No alcohol versus a bar tavern, which is something with alcohol, because that always ended up being. Like, kind of the stumbling block with people, the alcohol aspects of things.
Yeah, Perkins. But, okay, so, but what I wanted to make clear on that, though, is how it's written. And this is where it's just bringing it up for discussion of what the intent is, because they're both under for lake adjacent. They're both under the special permitted uses, so then they both have design standards, but they are. From my scan here, it looks like they have the same design standards, so then, anyone could. Like, basically to have a bar tavern, then you would just get the, the license, which if you're allowing it as a special permitted use. Already, and they're meeting these design standards, so like, maybe you're looking into differentiating, like. What exactly that difference is, if the design standards are the same?
Yeah, as, as of writ today, certainly they, they are the same. There was conversation about whether you would want to have any differences between the two. I think ultimately we settled on the scrap being the same. Yeah, but it, it leaves it open where you could potentially have different criteria for. An establishment that sells alcohol versus one that is going. Hours of operation.
Yeah, plus, it's also expectation of what the neighboring properties should expect. There may be instances where a, by this definition here, where a restaurant feels appropriate on a piece of land there. Talked between to help us, let's see if we did that as an example, whereas a bar tavern may not.
But the, the neighbors aren't going to know what they're doing. If it's a special permitted use and they're meeting all the design standards, so if somebody buys that and rezones it.
No, and that's, that's part of the reason that the discussion needs to happen here, we need to understand what we're, okay, right, so if we're going with special permitted uses. That needs to be in the ordinance of what those.
And the reason I asked, for example, you know, restaurants without alcohol sales is. We've seen a ton of new businesses per se, or, you know, green businesses. I don't know, a lot of people that are buying businesses that are getting beer and wine licenses, rum. And a lot of them are like kid friendly and stuff, so now all of a sudden, if you're saying that. Are those become bar taverns? And, and I'm saying that because what if they wanted to put it some kid friendly out of the lake, and they're like, we're going to have beer sales? Is that now a, a bar and tavern? And I don't think that's a, that's, I don't think that's fair to call. The new Thunder Road or the new Taco Building, or that's being called a bar tavern. It's a kid friendly place that you can maybe have a beer to, while your kids are in.
Randy, can you talk to that in relation to current ordinance, because that's a combined definition to.
So typically, the bar tavern is a conditional use. And that is only when they're going to do, like, so a retail establishment, they can get a license. And because then they're just doing off sale. And, but even those state statute, like, the license is on sale, off sale. But just how our ordinances and our uses are written, then if you are a retail establishment that's off sale. Then you can do that as a permitted use, but if you are a bar and tavern, then you, and. All of the districts, you still have to get a conditional use. So that's just something, that's where it differentiates itself in how ordinance is written. And I like where you guys are going with the special permitted uses in all the districts, as long as, when you just look at a use and say. Okay, this use at the lake, what, what do we think is, needs to be in place to be able to allow it? Because, and I like that, I think that, that creates a lot of consistency. And for this group to study that, but then just. That's just something I wanted to point out of, because today then, it, it doesn't differentiate it, because they're both in there. Somebody could be, they could go with. The retail or service establishment, restaurant, bar tavern, or the recreational use, and they would not have to go in front of any board. They would just have to get rezoned to the CLA. And then, as long as we were all comfortable, and that's another thing, that I liked that it's being looked at further. So that the CL district can be usable, so as long as we're comfortable with what we have as design standards. I think that's a good thing, but I think just the, this is where the opportunity to, to talk about some of those things, and to think about. As far as how the ordinance is interpreted, and to make sure that everything's written of what, of what the intent is.
Those businesses that are in, I think, C two or C three district today, that do sell alcohol for consumption on the premises. Are those always treated as the bar tavern?
Yeah. Yep, so like, for them to get their license through council, we have to write a zoning verification letter.
Alright, Mike, you have thought.
Because all of the discussion, so much of the discussion that we had over the course of many meetings.
A lot.
Oftentimes. Part of that related to alcohol sale. So, my understanding was, by the way, intended that it's set up was. Let's say I, I want to, I want to do this CL, I got this property, I want to do CL, okay. And I go in there, and one of the things is the boogeyman thing, right? Fear of the unknown, right? And that's where the previous language or allowances was flawed. That we had to bring that back to kind of minimize boogeyman of what could go in there. My understanding was that. By separating restaurant as no alcohol. And then defining bar tavern as. Basically a restaurant with.
On sale.
Referring to alcohol or a bar, right? That, that enabled people to come and voice and know what was going in there. That, what our intent was.
But you're, you're right, you're right, but as, as the draft is outlined right now, the, the criteria or the requirements for both. Usage are the same, and that's what Randy was.
Well, what I'm saying is, if I come in and get it, and just get the CL. And all these people are here to hear about it, concerned with it, support it, whatever, right? But you're saying if we just add, now, your guys' position, right, of doing first level approval of the zoning. You don't know which one's going in, and what we said is, we want to know.
Well, the neighbors.
We want to know that.
The homeowners.
That's where the problem.
Yes, that's, that was.
So my understanding was, by doing what we did, then. Your consideration at the plan commission level, and then ultimately our, the council level, was that. You know, it, to me, it's different if that's a, you know, I'm going to use your tacos, it's different if it's a little taco stand or a little ice cream stand. Would be a restaurant, versus somebody that buys it and puts a bargain. I want to know, I'm going to look at that and say, I think it's appropriate for ice creams, Dan, I don't think it's right for a bar. And so, if, this is, if I heard you, Randy, correctly, is. No, as soon as it's CL, they can do any of this, except, they did, there might be. A criteria or something put on it, but you don't know that.
Yeah, and so that is where. I think that it's, if that's the way that, now, it's also something to think about. So trying to go with the conditional use, so if you would break that out, and you would have your special permitted uses as the restaurant. That you, as long as you're meeting the criteria that's set in here, you can do that. Because it doesn't matter, like, we're good with that as far as approving the zone, but then if the bar and tavern is the boogeyman, then either. You create more design standards that make it very specific to what would be tolerable, call it whatever. What you could tolerate. And then, otherwise, so that, then you would move because of, and I think that going that track is. Almost better, because otherwise council doesn't see the conditional uses.
Boogeyman is always there.
Yeah. And so you would have everything in place of what the extra criteria to allow the bar tavern would be. That would go, that would be considered at the time of rezoning.
And that's what the framework here represents, so they're the same, considering now in the draft as a placeholder. What we need to try to elicit is, what are those additional criteria that you would want on a bar in order to be okay with making that decision upfront?
Yep.
Didn't, didn't we spend a lot of time on that, though?
I thought we did.
We did spend a lot of time, we, I remember Blake talking about. Shielding, what, what's your, what's your city? There, shielding, screening, sometimes they all mean the same.
It's all part of the district, but that applies to everything in the district, not just bar tavern.
Alright.
So, if, is there anything that's not covered in the design standards, and then those special permitted use standards? That you would additionally want on a bar or tavern that you wouldn't want on any other use of the zone?
Like if someone said, okay, I'm just going to have a taco stand and ice cream. But then, six months down the road, it meets the criteria, and it's the same everything, boom, we're selling beer and tacos.
Yeah, but by doing it this way, and, and, again, help me if I'm wrong, you're certain, help me if I'm wrong, but. At least if it were conditional use. Someone has to go face, face with boogeyman, and that would be you that, right? Someone, right, but whereas this, this, the way it's written, they see is always looming out there. No one faces it, the, the, the approval here, and our approval for the.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying completely, but I'm just trying to, I have to get here a little bit, what's the difference between R one, then? If I were to, I'm going to pick on your house, just because there's lands per se over next to it, if I were to go buy it, make a piece from that. That property, I have a ton of permitted uses I could do on an R one lot, especially in an acre. So, you don't know what, I could go put a tiny home, and that would be not great. For, I mean, for your property or right there, but you don't know that, but it's permitted, so I could go do it, and you would never have any say in it. So, I mean, I get what, what you're saying completely, because. Obviously, there has to be some regulation, especially around the lake where it's ninety seven percent residential, I, I get what we're getting at, but. There's, there's reasons for permitted and conditional uses, and, I mean, a zone has permitted uses for a reason. So if I'm going to go build a house next to someone else's, they can't tell me I can't build a certain house if I meet the regulations in. And. So how does that work for a liquor license, if you have the liquor license or don't have it? I mean, they still would have to get one and get it.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be the ultimate?
But it's different. Possible, number one, if it's a beer wine license. You know, those are pretty much endless in regards to volume numbers of them, correct? So, but you still don't control whether or not.
It would make it hard to deny it, though, it, especially that all of the criteria would be met.
Yeah, we've accepted the last fifty.
Yeah.
Now, oh, that guy gets denied.
I think so too, that, you know, the group where we kind of settled on these. Provisions was that, these were like some additional pieces that are a little more specific to these particular uses. That weren't already addressed in our minimums for lot sizes and our other design criteria. This is why we settled on this, because we did talk extensively about things like. Screening and lighting and parking, and all of those things are. For the, like, also accounted for, just in the design criteria portion. So we even have, like we mentioned, stuff about if you're going to be doing outdoor music events, lighting criteria, outdoor storage. We have fencing requirements for residential, we have transitional yards for stormwater and spacing. I guess that, that was sort of my assumption that we had just, from our discussions, we had already addressed a lot of the other concerns with proximity. And noise and that sort of thing within our design standards, and so that's been how we settled on then these additional provisions. To allow these to be more permitted outright, so if you're meeting all the design criteria, all the other zoning standards. The minimum, the maximums, everything else, on top of that, you're meeting these specific provisions, then. You may get a permit to have a restaurant, or you may get a permit to have a bar tavern, because you've already checked. All the other boxes that we have in place, on top of these two additional things, was my understanding.
And, so if you think about a property, we're primarily like, what, ninety three percent of the lake is residential, R one. The most protected zoning district that we have. So, the permitted uses that's allowed in a, in R one are a lot less intrusive than a bar tavern or a restaurant. So, but then you also, like, there, there are other ordinances in place, like, noise, and. So, because your neighbor could have a party every night and have music and, and whatnot, they could have lights everywhere. So, it's trying to think about things to put in the actual design standards. That would limit any of that. Annoyance or intrusion to the neighborhood, and, and like. Really, if they're going to have a restaurant where they have food and no alcohol. Yeah, you're probably, like, it's just typical that you wouldn't have as late of hours. So just, all, just trying to think about all those differentiating factors. Or that, yeah, like, I like what you got, like, where you're going as far as, like, with the outdoor seating areas. And you know, there's, there's limitations to that too, of being at the lake where. You're, you might get people going, like, there's, it regulates itself sometimes too, like. But it's really thinking about any of those factors of. What is intrusive about it? And what do we need to put in place to help. Alleviate that.
So this is a little more work that we have to do. But close.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think we have to come to an understanding of what our intent was.
Right on.
And I don't, I don't feel what I'm hearing right now. Beats our intent of what we discussed. Design standards, to be honest with you, that's going to be extremely difficult to do here in regards to separation of the, a restaurant from a. A bar tavern, I mean, at national height, you don't even do that effectively and be meaningful. Especially, obviously, you can't do it if they're the same. So, yeah, I think.
Mike is correct, the, the six committee members all agree that that was our intent, so we just need to get that in the language.
Go ahead. Yeah, isn't it just as simple as, as deciding whether or not I'm making conditional uses? That's basically, is that simpler?
I think one of the fundamental things that we're trying to avoid is having conditional uses.
No, I, I get that, because it's a bit of, it's infinitely regressive, because you might as well make all five of them conditional uses then, and then we've. We've gone back to the problem, because you could have, in theory, a religious institution that is disruptive. You could have the Church of Satan or something like that, I mean, it's, might not be our, you know, the average person's religion, but they're burning. Crosses or pentagrams out in the front yard or something like that, I mean, you could have. Destruct, challenging uses adjacent that would be frustrating, so at a certain point, yeah, is it all of them, is it none of them, and how do you protect for? Versus some of whom, but none of them, maybe not the other ones.
And again, we, we've set other parameters. As well, the, the committee did, so now we, now. As well, the, the committee did. So now we, now are requiring inner design standard. There's things like. Uh, fencing is required. Um, if you're building adjacent to residential zone, so on top of that, so think, you have your property. You have to have a fence. On top of that fence, you already have to have your setback. And within that setback, fifteen feet of that has to remain grass. So you're already. You know, there's a fence, there's a ton of space. I feel like that's, and then again, we put stuff in place for outdoor music. Um, it's lighting and then on top of that, put the limitations on where seating could be. So it wasn't, you know, starting to intrude on those side yards where you're getting closer to adjoining. Um, properties and those residential uses. On top of that, we did the limitation on hours. So again. Things aren't going, there's not like ragers till 2:00 AM. Outside, people hanging out screaming, being loud and rowdy. So I feel like. I guess I had thought that that was meeting the intents where. We were cool with these provisions. To allow for the special permitted uses, because we also had all the design criteria in place and then all of the. Regular zoning requirements in place as well.
So. Yeah, with the design standards right there, couldn't that eliminate if, if a restaurant? Okay, so you're going in for the restaurant. So if I'm gonna do the taco stand, I only need places for twenty people. If I'm gonna do a bar restaurant, I need seating for. A hundred. So obviously my lot needs to reflect that size. So could we not therefore somehow attach? The lot size to the liquor license, liquor permission? Um, because I'll guarantee you, I don't care. We have that as a conditional use. We're gonna have the head runners at every meeting and, and how are we going to straight face say? Yeah, if you're getting a bar next to you and the next guy comes up and, oh, he's my buddy, so no, I'll vote against it for your sake. So I don't think we can put it, there's no way to do that. I mean. See what I'm saying? Because one guy's gonna get stuff at the bar and the next guy isn't, depending on who they know. So I think if, if the restaurant, like you said, I don't know if anybody's gonna be too upset to have a little taco stand next to them. When it, the liquor becomes the issue. I mean, really, it really becomes the issue.
Maybe the committee can just decide whether or not to make it a conditional use and then we can proceed.
But that's what I'm saying though, then we're, we're still dictating, you know, who's. If it depends on the lot size, Liam. Then, then we really, then there's no reason for the condition. The condition is the lot has to be. Excellent size.
And allows so much parking on the building side, right? And that's already in there, right?
Yeah, yeah, those are already. Is that, is that the safety net you're looking for? So the boogeyman isn't out there, because when, when they come for that, then. We can say they're talking a taco stand today, however their lot is large enough to accommodate liquor someday.
But isn't lot size kind of arbitrary? I've been into a lot of small bars that are kind of disruptive. I've, I've been to a lot of bars at a lot of different places. Very long travel. Alright, that's kind of a joke.
I'm just saying.
Having a large lot size doesn't necessarily mean it's disruptive or not disruptive. In fact, a larger bar strikes me as. A larger lot, a larger bar strikes me as likely to be more disruptive.
And if you have a taco stand where you go in and you order and you got a couple of tables, you could be serving beer on that small lot. With the taco stands and. You know, if it's just outside, some juice.
But the lot is still fifty thousand square feet.
Yeah, that. What if that, on the south side there, that smoke shop that used to be there.
Smoking Johnny.
Or when it was. Smoking Johnny. Alright, I'll pop that in. And then there's that block one that's now on the west side that is free with it at all.
Then I just say that to your lake residents, buyer beware, you may get a bar restaurant next to yourself. That's the end of.
Well, and thinking, thinking bigger picture.
To change the zoning, they're gonna say no to absolutely.
Right, thinking bigger picture as well, something that has.
Moral.
Hello? There was somebody online that just, without muting their, or their.
I, I, no, no, I didn't.
Somebody online, let us speak. But just, but just looking back at, you know, other. We have, we have had an increase in bar and tavern conditional uses and something that has come up. A few times at the, the board meetings has been looking to address that, like, why does this something have to be something that remains a conditional use? Is it really, are we fighting it to be that intrusive actually throughout town? Not everybody wants and likes to drink, but are we having an increase in issue with? You know, me being able to grab a beer while my kids are. Playing mini golf sort of thing? No, not necessary.
My, my kind of like.
Yeah.
So then just leave it as you guys have it, that if you have a restaurant, the boogeyman is liable to show up and, but that's just how it's like. Leave it alone. That is, you know, luck of the draw. I'm the one living next to the restaurant now. So be it. If we're, if we're going to open development, then we need to open development and that's that. It's no different than, like you said, just where we added the, the liquor court across from the pool. I mean, there were some people that, yeah, I don't want in my neighborhood, but. I, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't think you can, you can't put it as a condition, because then we're right back to where we are now.
Yeah, and that was a fundamental directive that we took for this initiative, right? And what we met on last time as a group a year, a couple of months ago. Was to remove the ambiguity, remove the conditional uses.
Right.
And come back with something that we could say definitively, these are the requirements, these are the, the uses that could exist on there. And there is no question, there is no future discussion of what could be, it can be these things.
Right.
We decide that during. One set of, one set of meetings, right?
That's when the neighbors can show up and that's when developers, when they want to do respective developing. It gives them a door, you know, planned, but.
What, what, right, does that neighbor have to say, Bonnie?
Do that. No, I don't want that.
They're gonna kind of like they do now.
They can say, no, just see him. Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But that's gonna happen though. Yeah, and certainly, the difference, we keep referencing back to. The city, then city proper, so to speak. This is different than. You know, I liken this to, let's go into the middle of North Ridge, just right in the middle of, it's all residential. Let's go in there and let's take this half block and let's now start commercial development and, and get in the hunk. Not buyer beware, because they've already made their buy, right? Any future buyers, that's okay. But the ones that have already made that commitment. Those are the ones I have concerns with. Those are the ones that I hear significant bellowing from. I've already made my investment, right? And so. So the question is, is, we, we really can't relate it back unless we want to open that door and say. Would we as a city, because if it's right for the lake, it's right for in town, city proper. Can't justify it not. Then let's open the doors for commercial development in and amongst our existing residential area. Let's just open that up. Because that's what we're doing. We're talking about an existing developed area that's ninety five percent residential. And plopping, I use that word plop, because that's what we're doing. We're plopping a commercial business in there. People want to know, have the right to understand what's gonna go in there. And then the question I gotta ask, if we're not, then why do we differentiate between restaurant and bar tavern anyway then? Then it don't matter. If the design standards are all the same and.
Right, and that's where the idea. Today is because if you're doing, because the license to the state is on or off sale, so it actually. Helps to make sure that like all the parking requirements are met. As having that, that secondary layer. Of the conditional use, so that if somebody's going to convert it, because.
Conditional use.
I, I know. And that's where it's, that's something to think about too, though. It's because today they can sell off sale beer, but if they want to convert it to be on sale, even though they have the same license. How our zoning is written, then they have to get the conditional use for a bar tavern. So that might be the reason to still have a bar tavern as, but you still, you're still gonna have to meet all of the. Like the parking requirements, anything else in ordinance, if you want to use a special.
And I don't think any of those things are problems. Those are gonna happen, somebody's gonna look at it. Those are easy to look through and work your way through. Difficult to handle. And then we're gonna bring Todd back up, because we'll get his opinion on how this happened. The question is whether, we, we talked about the distinction between restaurants. No, no food, no alcohol. And then of our tavern, why we did that, which is food, something with alcohol or just alcohol sales, right? And they're both permitted use, special permitted uses. And the question came up is to. Or what does it take to do that? Well, if we do the zoning. And it gets approved. And then that's a special permitted use. And, and we talked about the boogeyman, right? Which is, most of the time that boogeyman has always been centered around alcohol sales. When it comes, well, some of the other items, but this was the one that really kind of dragged the lot. Was our intent? What was our intent?
We had that conversation.
And how to protect against the boogeyman.
Well. And that to be lit. So. In my opinion, again, we, we, we parse this out to say that restaurants are good, booze could be good, but sometimes it's bad. And, and, but it still goes back to me, and currently we make, I mean, bar tavern, as Brandy said, come get a conditional use permit. If they're gonna get a commercial, the commercial results. The only reason we thought about leaving this as a special permitted use, because. If we have more specific requirements that, that are currently outlay for every other bar tavern and the commercials over here. You're, you're limited to the hours of operation and music and all these other things that are. Potentially. Mitigating circumstances for the neighbors, right? We said, I can do this and I'm gonna agree that you're gonna, I'm gonna be turning my business plan to a certain extent over to the neighbors. And once they acquiesce to do that, I should be able to get a permit without having to go through another bloodbath, because in the end. We approve the zoning, we know that this is what they're gonna wanna do. They come now, three weeks later to a board of adjustment meeting, we have another hearing. And they meet all the terms of our regulations. How is, I can tell you this, as a board of adjustment manager, I'm going to vote pass every time if you meet our minimum requirements. And all I've done now is, is picked a scam off and I'm bleeding. So that's why we really are focusing on having things be permitted or special permitted uses.
Again, essentially, if we're trying to get rid of the boogeyman, once you just go back to the PUD. Make it a PUD where it has to come in front of everyone. And there's a lot more detail that has to come in, I mean, before it's approved, right?
But then if I want to change three years down the road, that maybe your original idea, you're gonna have to come back again.
I get it, but that eliminates the boogeyman. PUDs are always possible, even if we did this, but developers can still come in with.
Well, my argument is we're essentially creating a PUD. Just regulations on.
I mean, I can, I, I can come, I can do a PUD and make up what I want. If I can get the PUD, if I. I'm gonna have the same. Bloodbath as a PUD area as I am as a CL. But if I decide that, if I come in as a CL, everybody, everybody's still gonna know what it is. It's, it's gonna be Todd's Bar and Grill. I'm gonna be open Monday through Friday. It's gonna be open from here to here. This is one of everything I do. I can't have loud music every weekend outside. And everybody knows that. So. When it comes through, and then, and if my, my thing turns upside down and I don't make money to have to sell it. And the next guy buys it, well, I'm, I'm stuck at either turning it into just a restaurant. Or I'm coming, I'm stuck at having it to be, selling it to the city to have a public use. It's gonna be a religious institution, Todd's church, and then, or I could turn it into a lake retail, maybe I'm gonna rent it. But that's very much, everybody knows what's gonna happen on the lake. And once we know those are the five things that are gonna happen on the lake, why the hell are we gonna keep talking about it and talking about it? It's just. That's your twice cut once and be done.
But, but can I ask Todd, I wanted to have, you know, not being argumentative, but my question, you said, everybody knows what's going in there. If I come in and request CL zoning.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think what, what those five I'm under.
No, but.
So they don't know what I'm doing.
But the public knows that.
They don't find possibilities, but they don't know really what I'm doing, right?
No, they don't. But they know that it can only be one of these five.
Right, and narrow it down.
And then, and people, they can argue that, I'm okay with the kayak sales, but I don't wanna see a bar. Well. That's the reason to deny the zoning, because you're afraid of the bar and not kayak sales. I guess that's, that's the, 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 the actual official to make the big dollars.
So the big challenge with your situation, Todd's Bar and Grill. You, you get it approved as this, but in order to make a profit eventually, now you have to bring the bands in. That's a great idea. Now you gotta go a little bit later at night, and what's the restrictions on Todd's Bar and Grill?
Whatever the design standards that are in the ordinance.
So to think about those items, to think, okay, is it, like, do you wanna limit the amount of docks or slips or? Things like that, like all of those items of what? What creates, because you already have, like Carla said, you have the fence, you have a transitional yard, you have lot coverage. You know, and that, and you guys have the, the timing for the music events or outdoor music, whatever. Outdoor events. Um, all of that is already, and that also is in line with our ordinance for. Whatever they call it. No, uh, like, I'm not gonna think of the word, but perfume. For any of like, for, for what, like for music or just anything like that. Um, if it is ten for the city, I'm actually not sure, all around.
Eleven.
Eleven. Yeah.
So, so Brandy, our intentions are to protect the homeowners. The people who've spent. Two hundred thousand, half million, million dollars, now all of a sudden, I get a bar next to me.
Yep.
So our, as Mike has been pressing. Will this language protect those homeowners in that area? That's really what we're asking and where we want to get to. If it doesn't, if, if it doesn't fly through and get enough votes, so be it. It doesn't pass, but that's really what we're hearing. From. Those residents, just like you'd hear from people in town. Absolutely. Mike's example of setting it up in, in North Ridge. What, who the hell thinks they should be able to do that? So why should they be able to do it? Because there's water there? That's the only reason.
You could do it in North Ridge if you got the intersection of two commercial, uh, saddle, collector room.
Alright, alright. I get it, I get it, I get it.
To stay on that track though, and yeah, I think that. What needs to, because no matter what, you are always, at one point, the neighbors will get notification that. Their neighbor, it, when they're rezoning, the neighbors will be notified. Or if they were asking for a conditional use, which like I said, I like that you can go away from the conditional uses. I think that's how all the ordinance should get to. But, so then it's a matter of, they, the people that are against it because of the allowable uses by the special permitted uses will still be there. At planning commission and city council, which I think is better, that both boards get to be a part of it. And have that decision instead of it just be arbitrary with the board of adjustment on what the design standards are, if they, if it's not already in ordinance. So then. It's a matter of just putting in any of the items that. Would, would, and it, it is, it's hard because not every property or situation or business owner. Is going to be the same. So that does make it hard to set the design standards, but it's really like just thinking about those things. Like I said. The amount of slips, docks, outdoor things, um, the timing.
Where's the doubles and triples? That's what you want.
Yeah, yeah.
Any color.
This is, this is really similar to the Eastwoods plot that came through, I mean, it came through a dozen times, I don't know how many times, but. You know, I was sitting on the council, I even, we did, we encouraged the homeowners to, the developers to get something that better suited the neighborhood. Because it was a permitted use, well, I guess technically it wasn't. A reason, but. But that's what I, I guess I'm kind of likening the situation to, is that. Sometimes the neighborhood kind of is coming together and say, hey, we wanna work with you, we just want something that's gonna be. Best suited for this neighborhood. Whereas it's not necessarily. The governing body's decision to say, no, you can't do that because we don't know what you're gonna do. It's, yeah, you're permitted to do it, work with the neighborhood, please, otherwise we could have issues. I, I don't know.
I, I shouldn't even tell them.
Avoid that.
You're, you're right, because that's kind of one of the fallacies of, of the broadness of the bar building. If you look at where we've always had problem. I can't, I can't think of a problem that we've had in new development where it was talked about zoning and it's been a big issue. It's rezoned. That creates the problem, because then now there's already structure, investment around it, and we're saying, that. The solution to that with the PUD. Because then it defines what was going in there, right? Versus going straight, R3, so ultimately.
Want. Want.
Ultimately, we, we veered away from what was requested. Against that, okay.
Brandy's comments.
Yes.
But we want to avoid P U Ds because that is, if we can go conventional and we can get something right that's usable. Because otherwise P U Ds are administration wise, kind of a nightmare. Yeah.
Well, I have a question too. Since the last time we. Eight.
Sinclair Square.
Yeah, was it Sinclair Square?
Yeah.
So pretty far in between. You know, the other thing about P U Ds is they're subjective to whoever's looking at it at that time. So if somebody gets a P U D and it's designed in certain fashion, next guy comes in, wants to do it, he's going to expect the same things, but he may not get it. The people, because it's subjective. I mean, if you're starting from zero in that development, they're bringing you a development degree, a plan, and then you're looking at it and saying, well, yes, you can, no, you can't, you need to change that.
Yeah.
Just another thought for Pete.
Well, I've got a lake, it's not the same. You've got the whole public that can use that lake, you've got people in the back, you've got all of that. It's not the same as residential area. It's different. But it, but, but it, you know, fact is, most of it is residential. I, I agree, I don't want the lake is residential, and you kind of take that into consideration. But, but it's not the same as that residential area because it's wide open.
I think what he's trying to say is inbound versus.
Yeah. So if you go up into one of these residential areas and you say it's, it's not, you know? And so then you have, then you have the issue of the public in general versus those residential. And what, what rights do they have and what rights don't they have? When you're dealing with, with that, that area. And I understand you buy a house, you, you know, but that also goes with that. You buy it is you're on a lake, it's a public lake, not a private lake.
It's no different than being across the street from a park.
Senator, yeah.
Well, you have transitional zoning throughout town. We do have areas uptown where we've had bar tavern and restaurants immediately adjacent or within residential neighborhoods.
Product Street.
And I can tell you that the restrictions that are on here, way beyond anything that the board has ever done a conditional use standpoint, way beyond.
Chris Michelle.
So just to kind of boil down the discussion, it's, you know, you have the design standards. In order to be able to use one of these special permitted uses, you have to have a plan that conforms to all the design standards, all the setbacks and all that. So the argument is not really about the boogeyman. It's about whether the fact that if someone conforms to all those standards, no one can any longer argue a project on the basis of whether or not it serves the neighborhood. And it's a case of, is that what you want or is that what you don't want? Because that's, that's basically the concept.
I agree with you a hundred percent. You're putting the rules out there and yet I'm going to meet all the rules. And now you're saying, oh, but we don't like that it's going to be a bar.
Yeah, I.
Maybe just tied my answer, but you just told me I can't have a bar.
It is.
We can't, I, I don't think.
I'm buying that property with the intent of building a bar, realizing, yeah, I can do these other four, but I'm paying a premium dollar for that land with the intent of the best, the best return on investments is the bar in that location. And you come back to me and say, no, we don't want that bar, but heck, you could have a church. You know, well, that's not why I bought the property. So if you don't want me to have a bar, then take it out and not have it.
I agree.
Yeah, that's, that's the simple ways. But then I don't think you're addressing the overarching theme. What you're trying to do there is to provide opportunities for individuals that don't live at the lake to utilize the lake. One, two, also have opportunities for people that live at the lake to have things to quality of life and amenities close to them as opposed to having to drive fifteen miles to Walmart. Those are the types of things I'm talking to.
So is there any additional criteria that anybody can think of, like just now in the moment, that they think would be good to make the bar tavern feasible? Outside of like what we already have for design criteria, like any other specific provisions we feel like would make sense for that? Otherwise, I, if you see here, I have some.
Bill.
I didn't see anywhere listed these special considerations for signage related to the commercial lake zoning here. Is it going to conform with some others pre-established signage requirements? Respelled out.
Really good point.
Uh, because there'd be things like one restriction. Is it going to be front yard only, front and rear yard? How far off of the front or rear yard? How high would you want it? How high, how, well, size is pretty well defined in the ordinance. But if somebody paint on their business entity, says, you know, what it is, I would say, no, you don't want to have the signage on the screening. Or can they have a fourplex with a nice larger signage facing the lake? And maybe that is appropriate because it's a unique property, you know, now. Does it not be a need for some kind of different signage considerations for it?
Okay, it doesn't, it wasn't figured out, you need to switch on multiple lights.
Yeah.
Or every bug and everywhere.
So the, the L was not an ordinance. And then actually with the ordinance amendments that are coming forward today for council action will add C L will be treated the same as institutional uses in a residential zone. So like, it's a lot, it's a very reduced amount of signage. It's not anywhere in line with what a commercial property would allow. So that's just what we had, because it wasn't a trap.
So you're not going to have a big dollar sign stick now.
No.
Front yard.
No, because that's highway.
They say, you know, they use that today, you know? Example, but could potentially unless there were restrictions placed or permissions.
Yes.
I would think there would be a need for maybe larger signage facing at least the front yard, uh, as long as it's setback and it's appropriate, you know, certified.
Yeah, and that's definitely something that the committee can look into further. I'm just letting you guys know how it's addressed today.
All right, Rhonda.
I'm going to take us off of this and I'm going to go to the recreational use. Can you tell me what you mean by recreational use?
Yeah, it is.
If there's some condition somewhere coming up.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Okay, I didn't know.
City, guys, I'll leave you.
It is, okay. So that's all that's saying is they wanted to put a park on that block.
City was what a skate park.
Okay. And then the recreational facility is primed in, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, you guys, really good question. Okay, so then that'll be something with the provisions that the committee will come back and look at. Other changes, a lot of the design criteria is the same. Um, item C here under structures was something that was added just to keep the roof line in style with the residential structures. Um, the transitional yard is remaining the same. Uh, very important to keep those in place for stormwater protection. Other major changes would be, you know, there is now going to be item E for the outdoor storage. Um, is being added requiring a fence for commercial properties above a residential zoning. Um, and then the other major change is going to be the number five, which is outdoor music events. Uh, basically just putting some caps in place on outdoor music events for commercial uses at the lake.
I fought hard on. Oh, it's true.
But any questions, comments, concerns on any of those?
Carlos.
Yeah.
Somewhere in here, I read something about rooftop, see, shall be pitched or gable style. I mean, there's whole rooms out there that are neither, right?
Yeah.
Just like this only, but is that?
Montezlou.
But I don't go like, I look at.
Just this.
I mean, there, yeah.
Um.
Pitch, I mean, but it's a pitch, anything above zero.
Well, and we can put a lot, other communities will do like a specific pitch, like they'll specifically say that it has to be of a, a three twelve pitch.
Well, but my point is, I, I'm not sure exactly what that means.
Sure.
So I don't, I hope we don't have a design criteria that is so restrictive that something effective architecturally and functionally couldn't be used. And the other one is, I hate, I hate vague words when we talk about what the public and staff are trying to use. And under B, on B, it says, the exterior boom shall have varied and interesting detailing. We have a definition of interesting.
I know, but, and you know, and maybe that whole portion of that could be taken out. It, it does go on to like try to kind of explain what it's getting at with being, you know, once you hit that fifty foot mark, you gotta vary the bet.
That's probably a semi.
I think their language or what, you gotta have to take your something off a little bit. You know, I look at some places and I don't know what the right answer is.
So the, the real like meat of it is behind that, so that can really just be struck. Um, or have a semicolon because then it, it goes on to put more.
It's one of purpose statements.
Yeah, because it is, it's.
So gave back to my comment about the pitch for that word. So basically you're saying no flat roofs because the bridge must, must be pitched, whether it's a shag roof or lean to roof, if you will, that's what I call them, um, or a gable. So you can't have flat roof is what.
That's a curb roof. That's, that's the way the current C L is right now.
See, this is something that was being added to the designs. Right now, there's nothing about roofs in there. We can.
Just easier to say flabberies.
No.
But if we want to have a flat roof, can you watch your design?
It'd be a great place for.
I don't know why we really care.
Yeah.
Why do we care about the roof?
Right.
To me, the rest of it, the development, way more important than the roof. I, I don't know. So that might need to get looked at as far as how that works.
I'll, I'll strike it for now and then I'll make a comment for us to it.
I mean, the core of those, I think was supposed to be careful in the structure was to try to make it look more potential towards construction materials.
But you, a lot of your homes are, your modern homes have flat roofs, so.
Yeah, no, I don't think we talked about the roof.
No. There are so many different roof designs, you know, because most homes at the lake are, as we built.
No, but that's great. All right, guys.
All right, go ahead, keep going.
Um, okay, so then we have the boundary map for Comptasca. Um, and that'll show up in the variation of every, or in each district. Um, with the yellow being this one that we just went over. Um, blue is going to be the opposite, lake adjacent. Um, and then the orange is going to be the lake gateway. And then it shows areas that are, um, basically wetland areas where developed maybe isn't recommended. And then there's just also indicated where the C three.
More than living, this is going to change. This was just what we were using for our discussionary purposes, trying to figure out while there are certain areas around the lake that's just because of the topography and water. Makes no sense trying to protect those from, from, you know, environmental standpoint. And the areas that we talked about in orange, we're thinking, well, do we have a separate district for that? Or we do, do we just use conventional zoning and we got to come and land on that.
And some of this is county property.
And that's the other thing, every, 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 that's not, that's orange.
Is county.
Is county property, which means joint zoning between the city and the county.
And I assume.
That there'll be new subdivisions.
You'll also have a meeting with.
Once we can share what the city's focus is, I expressed this to the county zoning officer, we're going to have to look at a big amendment to the joint zoning district as well.
Like, we'd still be largely encouraging it to be, if you do this and then get annexed with the city.
But if I wanted to go a mile out on the edge of the red line out there and put a campground, for example, that wouldn't be allowed under current joint zoning, we'd have to change the zoning ordinance backwards. All right, Carl.
Can I touch base on that one for a second? Carl and I talked today and to me, it's just really, really clear why we need the, the first two layers of this, the yellow and the blue. Do we need separate zoning outside of what our current existing commercial zoning designation is?
I don't know, I, I think we can.
I don't think we do. It just seems like we already have.
We had kind of talked about.
Control rates and it's so far, I mean, it's well away from those two areas that we've defined as the first two layers of this. I, I, I think you just let your existing commercial zoning.
Or counties.
In language, and, and the county let it.
I think it's important from a land use plan standpoint that we identify an area that we're comfortable providing other commercial uses outside that aren't, that aren't adjacent to the city. Could that give the county and city direction? So a map similar like this needs to be incorporated into the land use plan, but I don't think this is the map.
But inside here, yeah.
It's a third zoning level.
But your whole area, it's still going to be that mixed use. You're still going to have some residential subdivision, two acre lots. And then you're going to have, you know, like commercial, like I can see commercial going round, turned downs personally. Someplace there should be a bar itself going down here. And, um, you know, and as you go a little bit farther out, I can see we're going to have them. And that's where you have your transition housing.
Even if we don't do the C L three, we still need to have some direction.
We need some actual distinction.
All right, Carl, how much you got left?
No. Um, so then really then the next zone then would be the zone two, so the blue area. Um, and that one is going to be really, really similar to the zone right on the lake. Um, so it's just defined as any property that does not directly above the shoreline, but is located across the right away from lakefront properties. Um, and then this one has very similar slough uses, only difference being now we're bringing in recreational uses, public and private. Um, and other than that, this is also virtually, it's going to be virtually the same, other than that additional use. Um, the design criteria is the same. Right now, the bar tavern provisions are the same. Um, yeah, it really only starts changing when they move on to that, that third zone, the orange area. Um, which again, the group has been talking about possibly omitting, but then just go to like traditional transition zoning. Yeah, nothing, nothing too different with the, this zone.
Really any of the orange areas touching the blue at this point would be lands that could be rezoned or annexed and then rezoned into the city as a C L two or a second calling. And those other orange areas that aren't adjacent, that are pretty further up beyond the long range planning aspects of the city for the next ten, twenty that still could maybe happen in the county in the incorporated joint zoning.
Um, so then we, we get to that orange area zone, the C L, like the lake gateway zone. Um, is that something that we would like to look at or do we feel pretty comfortable breaking that at this point?
Then there's probably Todd's work. Well, it'd be Todd's thing, but. So let's, let's pretend for sake of argument, say that everything in the orange is in the county. Okay, and I got, I own this little people land there and I want to bring it into the city. Does the, if the county let me carve that off?
If the.
What's the thirty five acre, thirty nine acre?
Adjacent to the city, touching the city, the county is going to say you need to annex into the city. We're not going to do that.
Right. No matter what the size.
Regardless of the size, because right now otherwise, but if I wanted to do a commercial, one of those listed uses that we have in the orange, right now, I think, you know, ten acres of ground, I'd have to rezonate the commercial county and that might not be the most best appropriate intensive use for a bond wage. So what we would need to do, in my opinion, is if, if the city is okay with some of these commercial uses outside of the adjacent properties, we need to determine what those are, have that conversation with the county and then dovetail a new section of their zoning ordinance to allow for some of that commercial to happen in the areas. The county is very averse to much development outside of the cities because they like critters and they tolerate people out there in the county. That's actually a good one to tell. And so we don't have very much commercial property zone in the county, except for some stuff, one, two, twelve. Um, but we would have to make some major changes in the joint. The county, but I think better to handle that way on the county's side, if at all. As opposed to making it and saying, well, here's a C three because most of it's outside of our jurisdiction anyway. So I don't even know, I've been thinking about that. How do we even apply a zoning district properties outside of the county, of the city? Can't unless it's either in the joint zoning or it's been acquiesced and given to the city. Or we at least maybe have it as part of land use plan, the county direction, I'll be on hand.
We mentioned everything that the, the orange. We mentioned that the, the horn really is a big question mark right now. And we do, we need to have, since how you representing guys, well, you, I mean, your job role. Representative county, city, do you wanna put a, can you put something together that, okay, here's the considerations and the actualism?
Please.
Where?
Yeah.
Michelle. And both Liam and I sit on the, like, jurisdiction.
Michelle.
Um, just going back a little bit to the adjacent, um, the lake adjacent. And then the basically lakeside and across the street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, are there any areas that anyone sees this development that would be across the street from each other that would be the same developer? And if that would ever be the case, would they be governed by what would be more, the more restrictive or what would be the less restrictive? So if you have. A parking, like just say in a parking lot, you know, you're not, that's not an ideal situation because you don't want people crossing back and forth, but. What if that's the case that you don't have enough land lakeside to do the development, you need to be within those standards? There's, there's land available across the street, you wanna do that, does it, does it go to the most restrictive?
Well, so in this situation, both on the lake or off the lake. We're exactly the same uses, except I get private recreation on the roadside.
Okay.
And so the only thing that would be, um, I can't do any of that private recreation on the water. So that, that's the only difference. So I mean, that, that was kind of a natural madness that if you're gonna keep these things together, somebody wouldn't have those problems.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's a great question, but I, I think that's what we've looked at.
Alright, so, um, do we strike CL three right now?
I think we need to incorporate it in the land use plan, maybe not.
Which, anybody else have an opinion on that? It's kinda seems like.
That feels right to me.
Yeah, it makes sense to me too. Yeah. There's your answer, Carl.
Okay guys. Okay, so then.
I don't think all the discussion on that's throwaway, that we'll just incorporate it into a different document.
It really, you can take a lot of it.
Alrighty guys, so then the, the final bit here, so let's strike this here. Is just looking at the minimums. So we have what is the CL currently, these are, this is the minimum lot area. Um, your minimum width, your setback requirement. Um, so then this is what's being proposed then for the. Um, CL zone, we'll call them zone one and zone two. Uh, the on the lake and across from the lake there, um, are gonna be these highlighted here.
Yeah, so the big difference, if you can just see that up there, the current commercial lake dissection requires ten thousand square feet, a hundred foot of frontage. CL two and CL one and CL two, which are on the water and across the street. This, we came up with that, we think we need to have a bigger lots to facilitate development, and then also gives a little bit more parking space.
Is there? That's, that's, that's. Did you guys have that discussion?
We, we talked, we talked about that and you guys, why don't you add two of me? We talked about things, the lake has residential zones. It's all, it's all zone R one, it's probably needs to have several different residential zones. We wanted to say that there's probably needs to be a discussion on residential development and residential zoning, half the lake allowing some more opportunity. If that's the case, but if I wanted to go out to the lake and zone something R three for apartments, I'd have that fight today. We were not, we wanted to be intentional to keep commercial uses solely in this incline and commercial. Well, zone, right? And that, and that was what came out in the discussion, right?
Correct. Then, then Colin's been quite, I actually thought about that this morning, was the mixed use scenario. And that, we did not talk about that.
The only thing that made it appropriate is like the watch and care, I'm, I'm living there, it's my business and I'm doing that, that's. We're talking about a mixed use like that, but we did talk about the idea, well, we wanted to say how many apartments, what's the number of apartments to be. It's the, across the street versus apartments on the water.
We're talking about the same building here, it's like, okay, down here is Taffy Shos and a boutique, and above here are apartments or condos.
Um, we didn't talk about that, we kind of separated the other things.
Right, and I, and I thought about that this morning, uh, Colin and I thought, well, that to me. Not, you know, look where we're at here on, on these, right, on, on what's permitted uses or special reuse, doesn't fit in any one of them. Um, but maybe it could in the zone two, well, and that's the other thing, we call this zone CLA and O. You know, I think Stan, not that it matters a whole lot, but we always call our stuff R one, R two, R three, R four, and then we have a. Commercial one, two, three, whatever it is, it just seemed like more simplistic to call it CL one, CL two.
I think it's really important to maybe have that discussion or. I mean, and the reason I really bring it up is, I mean, we all know how bad some of the restaurants in town are certainly, not just Watertown. Um, you know, we see fooders all the time and add another element where they can make it. With the living on top, maybe it's either restaurants or small food eats or whatever, it may be down. Would be huge.
There, we would probably use the same science standards for any of the mixed use that you'd have in other parts of town. That'd be additional parking requirements if you had three apartments above the. On the bar. You'd have law parking, which are one of those things.
Yeah. But right now you can.
No, we don't have any of that, that would just, that would be a question we'd have to talk about.
Yeah. Basically, you could have a max amount, like any of that would just fall within the, how the ordinance is today. But if you wanted to say, like, again, with special permitted use, if you don't have any design standards to add to it, then you could just say. Um, however many units you would allow would be permitted, and then if you wanted. To have additional requirements, if you wanted to allow more.
Right, and, and that's probably a question, like, we did talk about.
We did.
Now, if you have the water, off the water, and that with a number of units, are they, the people that are working and living there, or are they just for?
But, remember though, we just decided to keep residential and commercial separate for that, because if they wanna do townhouses and multi. Multi-family, then they can go R three still.
Right, the question is around. Point is, it does, it, it really does deserve our discussion. It mixed use is a different scenario, that's what you get, than purely residential at any level. Um.
So yeah.
So I think we always have to have the discussion.
So our timelines, what, what we're really wanting to do is, is not being a hurry. But get every, you know, get most of everything in this. Uh, like Todd has said once or twice, he said it a few times in our meetings. We're not here to hit the homerun, let's get to third base because development season is here. And we're gonna get more things coming, so is this something that we can quickly get, you know, in there and get it done right? Or is this something that we should just add on? Sooner than later. So that's, the only, yeah, I, I, I keep thinking about these deeper, deeper discussions. And we really just need to get something so that planning commission can get it in their table, I mean. And, and then get it on to the council and, and. Get something done.
And then just comparatively, did anybody, did anybody have any comments about the changing in the widths and the lot sizes?
Yeah. I think it could be excessive. Yeah.
In the Lake Comptascas master plan, it references having the, you know, the CL to similar to the. Possibly the C two, more neighborhood, so it is more compatible with the residential. Um, and we do have those other, you know, we have the transitional yards, we have big setbacks, we have buffers in place.
So on that, I don't know without going over the whole lake, you know, are there any, are there any fifty foot lots out there?
Yeah.
Probably are, okay. So why wouldn't I wanna buy a fifty foot lot and put my taco stand up? It's already a platted, why?
It's already a platted lot. So it would, I mean, to rezone it though, you would not meet the minimum lot size requirement.
I should need thirty feet.
I understand that, that's why I'm asking you, why? If I'm just gonna put a taco stand up, that's all I want, I don't need.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know, you've got five uses that. Now, we wanna commit to a taco stand via the PD, then commit to it. You've got five uses here. The other thing was, if we're gonna do this on the lake, talked about what's important is space. Because now, again, I mean, you're, you're plopping, you're putting something in amongst residential and, and. Alcohol and space are the two biggest issues, if the distance side to side. Plus, if you look at side yards or anything like that, you're gonna have a really narrow little parking gap.
I just want to run it down.
Interesting, um, but.
Guess I throw that one out.
Space was something that we wanted to, to make sure that we consider in any commercial area.
Seeing some of these type of questions, so.
Yeah, parking is.
Yeah, plus you need parking.
Parking is, because they're gonna park all over.
The time is gonna be so good, I'm gonna wanna.
Now, Rhonda, if you want really dive into a develop, these Zorbas that we go to up in northern Minnesota. These, that's, you know, the taco stands good, but.
I can barely make out what you're saying.
Okay. Anything else, Carlos?
The one thing that we did that I think might be different than what. Existing ordinance language was, was, I'm not sure whether it's the front or backyard, no, but. The lake side, that now backyard, will be potentially.
I think, so those are coming forth in amendments. Um, I think you guys will hear about those today, actually, yeah.
It's part of our discussion that we're having on the.
Um, cause what we said was, here on the lake, it, it required a thirty foot.
Mm-hmm.
Setback.
Yep.
And we're saying, for commercial, you know, you go all over the place and. I'll, I'll use bar restaurants, the ones that are so applicable, it seems like, they go right up to the edge of, of the, the body and there's a wall there. There's, there's a, you know, the. You know, exact that goes there and it's out to the lake and. So we said, in, in our opinions, in those applications, that's probably okay there. And not confined, I'm informed to that thirty foot from the. The water, high watermark, actually, right?
Yeah, you're spot on. And we, we were addressing more of like the, those outdoor seating areas as kind of like, more like hard skating, not, not the.
Was the building.
Right.
It was board structure.
Yeah.
Patio decks.
Oh, it's a, the.
I think what we were.
So no setback.
For what I would call, it's, it's kind of an accessory use that's, that encroaches the water, some purposes of. Taking water in, so I don't know how you, how you verbalize that.
Well, and I think the. We've already made those changes in the previous ordinance that, because it was always a question about like the patios or. Um, where, where your actual property is, because people actually own to the ordinary and have watermarks, so then. They could put their patio or bring a hill out to that, to that distance, and then, yeah, your structure though. So the, the front yard at the lake, that will still remain a front, it's just how we're, what, how. It was, the ordinance is coming tonight, is just clarifying really with the, um. The detached garage structure and then allowing those to be closer to the street. When they are entering it per, uh, perpendicular, parallel. So it, it's, it was more so clarity on that because of what a front yard is defined as typically, um, just for lake properties. So the, the street side at the lake, the lake properties will have two frontages.
Okay.
We're not gonna call it the street side, the rear anymore, because it does have two frontages. Instead, and there, there was just confusion with that. So I guess you're the assessor that's like, this.
So maybe just where we go from here and then where we're at, that's where we're at, yes. So I guess the question is, Mike, do we need to have one more meeting to talk about that?
Yeah.
Are we ready to have somebody just make a, a motion to include that or just not discuss it?
Well, I don't think we need emotions right now.
No, no, I'm talking about.
Bring it to the planning.
We take it to the planning commission, have the planning commission vet the idea of mixed uses.
Personally, I think if we had one meeting, it wouldn't take very long to, to at least have something that's included for consideration and discussion.
Oh, weren't we talking this coming Thursday? To bring it in front of the plan.
That was my ambitious goal, but.
So that's my change, I think we could have a discussion, wouldn't take long, put a little bit of language in there in regards to mixed use, I think it's a relevant. Topic.
Yeah.
Um, but you know what, then it goes to some, you know, then it goes to the planning commission in language form. Yeah, and then you consider it.
Carla Brandy, are you?
Where are we at timing?
Yeah, exactly.
When do you need it to meet a certain deadline?
We can just make it fall in whatever deadline, I mean, there's no. catalyst as far as, um, and we can also chat, but it's just wherever, whenever you guys, when do you think you would meet next?
Well, I'm saying if we got together next week, just.
Like next Monday.
That works for us, have something to you next week, or Carla will have anything ready to go. Then we got a ten day notice, probably looking at the. Second week, second meeting in February for the planning commission. Then I'm being first meeting and third meeting, first and second meeting in March. With the city council, if adopted, it'll still be about May before.
And Carla could put together some different timelines, uh, and then send that to the group.
Yeah.
Of where we need to fall for the notices and everything. Um, yeah, I think that mixed use component will be important because when you think about. But also keeping in mind that a minimum lot size is nine thousand square feet. And so, you know, if somebody wants to have like some cabins, or they wanna have some units, all of that. I get a little complex, but I can even think about it a little bit too.
Yeah, I'll talk to you too.
Well, we got to find a huge means, but.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, whether it's part of the principal structure.
Yeah, that's what I was convinced it to be.
Okay.
Alright, we'll do our best to, to, together next Monday or Tuesday, depending on schedules.
But when you think about stable waters, like how they have the cabins. So that we don't, because I think that's important too, that it's primarily, uh, that one's a little tough, but like. Or you think of ABR at Ponset, how they have the little cabins, so I think. Getting it straight on what, where our mind goes with the mixed use.
So now you start to get into what's called a resort.
Yeah, it's definitely just a resort.
Well, I think we'll do a little bit on Monday at three, if that works for everybody, and. We'll come back, Carla will have the direction, probably can have us, give us some timelines as far as what happens. And then our overall intent would be that we would have everything ready, available for the public's consumption, ten days prior to the public hearing. Online, so you can see what it is in the lake, have the public hearing, the planning commission. It's the eighteenth of February.
Twenty?
I'm sorry, twentieth, twenty, I'm thinking Tuesday. Twentieth and twentieth, I'm gonna take it from there, see what happens.
So before, before we get out of here, and it is time, we've spent time. Is there anyone else in, in that, that, that attendant that has additional concerns, questions, or are you guys good?
I won't take too much time, uh, everybody's busy. And very well from the Lake Comptascas Water Project District, and as Christopher, everybody knows. Uh, at one time or another, we've been very concerned as it was water quality. Uh, we continue to be, uh, as far, sort of on the fringe of this project, I admit. But one of the things that has happened in the last few years that we've seen, and I think has the potential. Is, um. It, it is the filling of, uh, sloughs and, uh, other. Water falling areas that, uh, are important during flood periods. Uh, that are important in, uh, in our fishery. Uh, and are really part of the, um, the ecosystem of that lake. And, uh. As we saw, uh, a few years ago, we filled in that swamp next to the golf club, and now we have condos. And, uh, storage, uh, if you get down, drive down by the Manzel property. You've got a huge. Uh, if you drive down by the Manzel property, you've got a huge mound of dirt. I don't think somebody put that there so they could put a lawn chair up and look over the roof and see the lake. I think that's going to get spread out into the lowland. And I think, uh, the more attractive, attractive the lake becomes and the more attractive the lake becomes for commercial purposes. The more we have to watch to make sure we don't ruin. Sorry, thank you.
No.
Good point.
Thanks, Greg. It's really, I mean, the biggest, the biggest hurt to our lake and ecosystem and fisheries is when we build roads around it and cut off all the sloughs in the background. Now they have nowhere to go spawn, so there's one good one, and that's the one that goes to the Sioux River, but, um, they, they use multiples. So, I mean, fishing and recreation are incredibly important or.
Asphalt that drains, uh, dirty water into the lake and.
Yeah.
That, no, we did have them do a wetland delineation through the core.
Pardon?
We did have them do a wetland delineation through the core, though, before we would have issued permit. And that, like, that is what we have in place today of what's required, because it's not our jurisdiction. Other than if we wanted to add additional.
But it was, we would want to do everything we could to protect the lake.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, Randy, you ready to?
Yeah, I'm just going to say thank you, everybody that's been on this committee. Uh, I think there's still going to be some unanswered questions, but I think you hit it ninety five percent. I know I got a couple of questions, I'll send a couple of you guys emails. But but thank you very much for the time and effort you put into this, because it's been a, I got battled for a number here. Just with the new CLA, with everything that's happened out there in the past few years, so, uh, I think it's going to clarify some stuff. Bob, do you feel better about it?
Yeah, I just, my concern is that we go by that. I spent a million stock.
Yeah.
And I, I don't want to lose all the things that I was assuming that we had, you know.
Well, it's like, it's pretty much covered. Uh, one of the concerns I got, which is touch base to you guys, I was going, I didn't want to stop the meeting, put it that way, but I do have a problem with the. Annual, cutting it off to the block at nine thirty eight, uh, it's more different than the Bob situation is, because I'm going to just take the sandbar, for instance. He bought a property, here it is. Nothing to say you can't use patio, now we're going to say Monday through Thursday, you can only run it until ten o'clock.
Nope. He's not CL. That's, the sandbar's not CL, that's a commercial property.
That's why I want.
That's a whole different deal, this is only on the CL.
This would be on new people.
Okay, so that, this is what the public can.
Yeah, you know, it's all, glad I asked. Good question, I mean theoretically, I could still go out to the lakes again, I could ask them to zone a piece of property, C two. Those locations of having a bar, wouldn't have any of the requirements or restrictions, but it's going to require a conditional use here. Reason that we decided to make these special permitted uses is that if you go through the CL, we have to give up more land, we're going to have to pay a bigger settlement amount, a bigger pitch, we're going to find a, but. I'm all, I'm going to have you dictate me what my business plan is. By doing that, I automatically have to pull the advocate.
So I cleared that up, right? Thank you. So, uh, let's, let's wrap it up, and and I want to say, there was a ton, ton of experience, years with Bonnie, Tommy in the committee. Mike on the committee, Blake and Todd, Mike has put in his recognition, so really, really deep. Have a city councilman sitting in and seeing all those years of complaints. I mean, he finally had enough of all the complaints, so he started. So we, we get to, we, we get, we were able to take advantage of your years of.
Axon, it's the next communication, what it was.
All of these, yeah, stop, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to look for a motion.
Yeah, sure.
The council side.
All right, let's do it.
So, back in my, back in customer dealer, in discussion, seeing all of everything, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Curious.
Yeah.
Wait, if I had a commitment. Motion second to a chair, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both at the same time.